Good morning. We're now ready to begin with our council meeting. We are blessed to have Pastor A.T. Hartgrave, the pastor of our community, excuse me, our Lord's Community Church. Will you all please stand?
Let's pray. Father, I thank you for these men and women who you've given office to to lead our city, and I pray that you give them wisdom and direction to lead in a way that's for the good and prosperity of all. And Father, I pray that they are able to do that with righteousness and faithfulness. And we pray that your kingdom would come and your will would be done in our city as it is in heaven, and we thank you for this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I want to ask Councilman Greenwell to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
We will call this meeting to order. Next on the agenda is Item 3, Office of the Mayor. We have three appointments.
Move the appointments.
Second. And the item passes. Next, Item 4, The Journal of Council Proceedings.
I move approval. Second.
And this item passes. Next is Item 5, Requests for Uncontested Continuance.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I've got several this morning, starting on Page 13, under Item 9 L1. Item H, 2437 Southwest 42nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner is removed. Item I, 1156 Northwest 56th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner is removed. Item K, 6701 Southeast 160th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. Moving on to Item 9 N1. Item A, 5501 South Barnes, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item F, 2409 Northwest 18th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item G, 2517 Northwest 21st Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Moving to Page 14. Item K, 2432 Southwest 33rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item M, 622 Southeast 49th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item O, 719 Northwest 114th Street, we need to strike that. It's now occupied. Item P, 800 Northwest 114th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Moving to Item 901. Item A, 5501 South Barnes, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item F, 2517 Northwest 21st Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item K, 2432 Southwest 32nd Street, or 33rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item M, 622 Southeast 49th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. And finally, Item P, 716 Northwest 114th Street, we ask that that be stricken. It's now occupied.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. We will recess the council meeting and convene as Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are three items.
Move the items. Second.
And the item passes. We will adjourn the OCMF-A and convene as Oklahoma City Property Authority. There are four items.
Move the items. Second.
And this passes. We will adjourn the OCPP-A and convene as Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, Claims and Payroll.
Move the items.
Second.
And this item passes. We will adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene as the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move those items subject to individual consideration.
Second.
Any individual considerations?
I.
V. We will start with Councilman McAtee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item I is an item that is a change order that closes out a project in the River Park area of Oklahoma City. This particular resurfacing was done under the 2007 Bond Program, and this completes an ADA-compliant sidewalk on the west side of South Shawnee for several blocks. My kudos go out to Gina Daniel, the former president, and Myra Modern, existing president, for their efforts, along with a group of citizens who have labored through this and have helped to turn their neighborhood around, and this will be the infrastructure that does that. And I see Eric Winger just coming, and if you'd pass along to your project leaders my thanks for the way that they conducted this. This put sidewalks on one side of every street and resurfaced the streets for 11 lane miles, and it'll really help spur this area forward as it faces the challenges in the future. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Councilman Greiner.
Yeah, Item V is a resolution that's authorizing our staff to prepare a $200,000 Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, and the purpose of that grant is going to help in adding an adaptive baseball field to the Route 66 parks. And I had no idea what an adaptive baseball field was, so I had to look it up. It's actually, it's a baseball field that's basic, that's not dirt and grass. It's a, it's kind of like a playground surface, and it's intended to facilitate baseball games for handicapped kids and adults. And so it's a really cool addition that's going to go out there. The actual field is, is already funded through our 2007 Bond project, but this is to add other things like lighting and, and a scoreboard, things like that. So that's, that's just an exciting project that, in addition to the Route 66 park, so just wanted to highlight that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I did forget something, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Item Y is an amendment with the Family Justice Center Alliance to provide consulting services for us. The Alliance is the only comprehensive, I thought I saw you, Tricia, you were hiding behind Eric, so I wanted to recognize Tricia Everest, who's doing so much work on this on behalf of the city and all the groups that are coming together to help develop probably the most comprehensive family justice center around the country, and we're so grateful for your work. The Alliance is working on over 150 centers that are currently being developed in the U.S., Europe, Middle East, Africa, and Central America. They provide a very valuable role in being the glue that's bringing all of our partners together. I think we have a temporary, or a ribbon-cutting ceremony coming up on the temporary facility on February 4th?
February the 2nd.
February the 2nd.
February 2nd.
So we hope everybody will come. 11th and Hudson.
11th and Hudson.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Tricia. Well, we hope everybody will come and see it. It's an amazing project of so many folks coming together to solve a really important need in our community.
And I had the chance to see one of the Alliance projects in Fort Worth, the Family Justice Center in Fort Worth, and so I think as a city, we have some great things to look forward to as it relates to the Family Justice Center, and thank you for your hard work and the group's hard work in making sure the Family Justice Center is a success in our city. Are there any other items for consideration? All right. And this, these items passes. Next, nine items requiring separate votes. The first one is 9A, and this one is in Ward 6. This ordinance is on final hearing, recommended for approval, ABC 870, ABC 2, Alcohol Beverage Consumption Restaurant with Alcohol, located at 3401 Northwest 29th Street. Is anyone here wanting to speak on this item? Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up?
No one signed up.
Thank you, John. This application, as you said, is for beer and wine and mixed beverage sales at a restaurant at 3401 Southwest 29th in a vibrant redeveloping district where we hope to have the law 29 bid accomplished this year. It was passed at the Planning Commission with no protests and unanimously approved. I would move for approval.
Second.
Is anyone wishing to speak on this item? And this passes. The next is 9A2, PC 1004693, 15 Southwest 27th Street, from R2 Medium Low Density Residential District to O2 General Office District, and this item is in Ward 4.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. The, this is really to facilitate the expansion of the Capitol Library. The city's the applicant, and I'd move approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk, anyone sign up to speak? Anyone wishing to speak on this item? And this item passes. The next item is PC 10479, 624 North Virginia Drive, from R1 Single Family Residential District to I2 Moderate Industrial District, and this item is in Ward 3.
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up to speak? This has an interesting background. Late Friday, we were notified by one of the citizens out there that he had some concerns over this particular project. We were able to contact the representative's lawyer, Herman Gray, yesterday. He came down and met with the citizen. The citizen and he worked out their differences. It all involved a 50-foot stretch where vehicles would not be allowed in, and hours of operation of 8 to 8 so that it would not disturb sleeping. The citizen was satisfied. The applicant was satisfied. They're going to put together a separate agreement between the two to resolve the issue, so they gave me permission to, if nobody else was here to speak, to say that I recommend that we pass this particular project.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? And this item passes. Next is 9A4, which is SPUD 926 1701 North Classen Boulevard, from C4 General Commercial, CBO Classen Boulevard Overlay, and UCD Urban Conservation Districts to SPUD 629 Simplified Plan Unit Development District, and this item is in Ward 6.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak? Great. I see that the applicant's here, but this item went before the Planning Commission on December 8th, and it was recommended for approval. The project is just north of 16th and Classen, right at the gateway into the Plaza District, mixed-use development that will include primarily multifamily residential office and restaurant uses. It is fully in conformance with the OKC plan. It creates the type of infill density that we're looking at in and around near downtown. There was one protest letter that was sort of an interesting letter. It, there is no impact on the business that protested. In fact, the protestant suggested that having this development there would really help their business. It was a question about some egress, and, you know, we explained the situation. I think the fact that no one is here to speak on this, I think, says that all, everything has been resolved. So with that background, I would move approval of this project.
Second.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on this item? And this item passes. The next, the next item is 9A5, SPUD 3, excuse me, 934 10500, South Sooner Road, from AA Agricultural District to SPUD 934 Simplified Plan Unit Development District, and this item is in Ward 4.
Is there anyone here to speak on this item? I move approval.
Madam Clerk, anyone signed up to speak? And this item passes. The next item is 9A6, SPUD 938 1423 Northwest 33rd Street, from R1 Single Family Residential District to SPUD 938 Simplify a Plan Unit Development District, and this item is in Ward 2.
If no one signed up to speak, I move for approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk, anyone signing up to speak? And is anyone here wishing to speak? And this item passes. The next item is 9A7, SPUD 939 925 North Meridian Avenue, from C3 Community Commercial District to SPUD 936 Simplified Plan Unit Development District, and this item is in Ward 3.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anyone signed up to speak? This was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission. It converts the back portion of a building site into some storage. It adds a sidewalk along North Meridian. Seeing there's no protest, I move for approval.
Second.
Anyone wishing to speak on this item? And this item passes. The next item is 9B1 and 2. This item was deferred December 20th and also January the 3rd, and I do see we do have the applicant present. This item is in Ward 8.
Madam Clerk, do we have anyone that signed up in opposition? This has come before several times. It was deferred. It was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission, and I would move for its approval.
Second.
Anyone wishing to speak on this item? And this item passes. The next item is 9C1 and 2, Amendments to the Master Design Statement in regards to PUD 1627 4105 West Memorial Road, from PUD 1549 Plan Development District to PUD 1627 Plan Unit Development. This item is in Ward 8.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is also an ordinance on final hearing. It passed at the Planning Commission. There's no opposition that I'm aware of. Anybody sign up today to speak in opposition? I'd move for the approval.
Second.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on this item? And this item passes. The next item is 9D1 and 2, which is Amendment to the Master Design Plan 7. This is a SPUD 9337720 North May Avenue, from Residential R1 Single Family District to SPUD 933 Simplify a Plan Unit Development District, and this item is in Ward 2.
If no one signed up to speak, I move for approval.
Second.
Has anyone here wishing to speak on this item? Madam Clerk, anyone signed up? No one signed up to speak? And this item passes. The next is 9E1 and 2, Amendment to the Master Design Statement, SPUD 936 4801 South Pennsylvania Avenue, from C3 Commercial, excuse me, Community Commercial, and R4 General Residential District to SPUD 936. This item is in Ward 6.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has anyone signed up, Clerk, to speak on this item? This item is to remodel an existing building and add some parking to the west of the site. It was approved by the Planning Commission, subject to the TEs, which include, in addition to the standard water and wastewater utilities requirements, sidewalks are being installed along Southwest 47th and South Pennsylvania Avenue. Access must be limited to drives on 47th Street, and there's no access permitted off of South Penn, and the electronic signs are specifically prohibited in this SPUD. There were no protests, and I would move approval.
Second.
Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? And this item passes. The next item is 9F, Ordinance on Final Hearing. This is in regards to PUD 1622 8401 Southwest 74th Street, from PUD 1361 Plan Unit Development District to PUD 1622 Plan Unit Development, and this item is in Ward 3.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up? This is a little bit unusual if you read this. This, the applicant wants us to deny this particular item, and the Planning Commission has already denied it. I'm in favor of also denying it, so unless there's questions from the council, I move for denial.
Second.
Anyone wishing to speak on this item? And this item passes. Now, excuse me, this item is defeated. Sorry, I was getting in the motion of passing things, so my apologies. Again, this item is denied. The next item is 9G, the closing of 520 feet of Kelly Avenue, north of East Reno Avenue. This item is in Ward 7. This item was approved by the Planning Commission. Can I get a motion? Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? This item passes. Next item is 9H, which has been stricken. Our next item we have is 9I, which has been deferred to January the 31st of this year. Next item is 9J, and this is in regards to our 911 services.
There was a presentation on this two weeks ago.
Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? And this item moves on. Oh, I'm sorry. We do, we need a motion. Okay. Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? All right. And this item passes. Next item is 9K1 and 2, and we do have a presentation.
Good morning. This morning is the introduction of the ordinance and the first public hearing for the creation of the Western Gateway Tax Increment Financing District. The Western Gateway Tax Increment District and Project Plan is the project plan for the Wheeler District area in Oklahoma City. Just to go through the plan a little bit, this plan has been brought to us by the owner and developer of the property. It is, we'll talk a little bit more, but it's really a project-based TIF that is covering this very specific area. That is 150-acre master plan development along the Oklahoma River. The property was purchased by the current owner in November 2006, and they've undertaken a very lengthy planning process to develop their master plan. It's an ambitious project that represents the redevelopment of a blighted area in Oklahoma City. They are proposing about 2.5 million square feet of mixed-use development that includes 2,000 units of housing and a total investment, private investment, of $576 million. Like most of our TIF districts, or all, pretty much all of our TIF districts, it foresees a lengthy implementation horizon of 10 to 15 years. This, this TIF district is a little bit different than some of the other ones that we have looked at in the past, and one of the things that we have worked through with the developer as we've talked about this TIF district with them is that in this TIF, the developer will assume all of the financial risk for financing the TIF improvements. As I mentioned before, this is a project-based TIF. It does have 10 different phases and is divided into two distinct districts. There's, there, there will be a District A and a District B. A will be implemented initially, and it is the area west of Western Avenue, and then District B will be the 25-year time horizon. We've, we've got the same situation in several of our TIF districts now, but the time, the 25-year clock will begin later for Area B. Some of the things that are proposed as a part of this TIF district is using part of the revenues from the incremental tax revenues to fund a new elementary school for the area, and at some point in the future, a mid-high school. As I mentioned before, one of the features of this TIF is that the developer assumes all of the financial risk. The TIF revenues will be used to fund infrastructure. The developer will fund the infrastructure himself upfront and in phases, and then the increment from the private investment, from the vertical development, will fund the reimbursement of those infrastructure costs plus any related financing costs. Excuse me. The infrastructure includes things, you know, typical infrastructure expenditures, water, sewer, streets, drainage, open space improvements, the engineering, planning, and design that's related to those developments, the parking structure, parking structures and parking lots, and then improvements to the riverbank, the river improvements and docks, and security infrastructure. Earlier this year, the developer presented a plan unit development, and it has gone through the process and received approval by city council. It's PUD 1611. It incorporates the, the features of the master planned development, and these are just some images from the plan that were approved as a part of that PUD. Again, here's some of the, some of the, some of what was included in the, in the master plan document. Again, different types of residential development, multifamily, single-family, and multifamily of, of a variety of densities as well. This is just another image of the, the master plan for the entire development. So the, the budget that's included in the project plan is $120 million. 60 million of that is for infrastructure. 20 million is for the dual immersion elementary school. 40 million for a mid-high school, and the project plan also contemplates that increment revenues can be used to fund the interest costs for the private financing of the infrastructure expenditures, which is estimated between 30 and 60 million dollars. And the variance is because of timing, interest rate, all of the different variables that go into financing a project. For Phase 1 of the project, the increment will be provided 75% to reimburse the developer for those upfront infrastructure costs and 25% to fund the elementary school. And in Phase 2, 100%, by, by Phase 2, all of the infrastructure will be installed and completed, so in Phase 2, 100% of the increment will be set aside to fund the mid-high school.
Kathy, can I, so is that 30 to 60 million on top of the 120 million?
Yes.
So it's 150 to 180 million?
Yes.
Okay.
We've negotiated the provision of the $60 million in assistance to fund the infrastructure in a phased approach, so the, the $60 million is that 75% that's funded from Phase 1. And for every, for the, in the first piece of that, the developer can receive 20% of the first $80 million of incremental value that's created, so that equates to $16 million, recognizing that it's important to get the infrastructure put in quickly and that there's more risk at the beginning of the project than there is as time goes on. So for each of those different levels of increment value that's created, the developer receives a different percent of, of the funding back to fund those infrastructure expenses until we reach the $60 million amount, and it is capped at $60 million. So in summary, this is a project area, a project-based TIF as opposed to an area-wide one. So in summary, this is a project-based TIF as opposed to an area-wide one. Several of the others that we have in existence represent an area, the downtown, northeast Renaissance, the Health Center. And this one, the developer is at risk. He must create the increment in order to be reimbursed for his costs for the infrastructure and the financing of that infrastructure. There are no city funds pledged to backstop the project or to provide any kind of moral obligation pledge. There is a prohibition from the Humphreys Fund financing any of the improvements, and it does include a cap on the reimbursement of the financing costs. The agreement, the development agreement that we will enter into with the developer will be non-transferable, and it does include the funding for two schools. And depending on the rate at which the private investment is created, the timing of the construction, the accumulation of that funding is a little uncertain. So just to kind of tell you where we've been with this so far, on January fifth, we had a presentation to the TIF Review Committee and a recommendation to move the project forward. On January twelfth last week, it went to the Planning Commission, and they passed a resolution that it, a finding that it was in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Today is the initial ordinance and public hearing, ordinance introduction and the first public hearing on the thirty-first. We will have the second public hearing, and then the ordinance would go into effect March second. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. The developer is here and can answer any specific questions about the development and his plans as we go forward with this.
I think this is really exciting, and one thing that comes to mind was last year when Mayor Greg Fisher was here from Louisville. He was singing our praises about the river and what's happened so far, and he said, you know, Mark, the next thing you're going to see is housing. You're going to start to see housing on the river and young people moving to the river. And so if we had the perfect scenario, when would we start to see housing on the river?
Blair, you want to answer that? He's probably better on the timing of this than I am.
That's going to depend on who you ask.
Our current projection is, we certainly would hope to complete this process successfully, and that will allow us to break ground in April. And that would really put us in a position to where in late 2018, we should have our first residents moving in to the district.
Oh, I'd like to add something to the, since this is the public hearing. There's been a lot of energy put into this thing in terms of public input. I mean, I commend you, Blair, for the amount of work you put in to work with the schools on this because it is kind of a unique proposal with regard to public education, and a lot of energy was put into that, and I appreciate that personally. The other side of it is, there was quite a bit to do about the public being aware of this, and I know you've had several opportunities for the public to weigh in on that. And that may be one reason why, along with the fact that hardly anybody ever shows up at public hearings anyway, but that may be one reason why we don't have anybody here to talk about it, is because there have been proposals, there have been meetings on Twenty-Fifth Street and probably elsewhere, that where people had an opportunity to see what was going on and weigh in on it. It's, I can't think of a better word than courageous to attempt this project. It's a big opportunity, but for it to be the first real project of its kind in the city and also for it to be on the south side of the river finally, I couldn't be more pleased with it going forward.
I'd like to share Pete's sentiments if I could. You know, this project really started out years ago with public design input. Long Weekend Charette, where folks came in over a weekend and talked about what was important to them, what kind of design specs they'd like to see, what kind of density, what kind of amenities. And lots of changes were made early on, and it's really a project that's bubbled forward with a tremendous amount of public input and consideration. If you looked at the map, you see that the street connections in South Oklahoma City, Fifteenth Street in particular, are reopened, and I really believe that this will be the same kind of catalyst for redevelopment of these low-income, south-side neighborhoods as we have seen in Classen, Tenpen, and Gatewood and Lynnwood and, you know, et cetera, surrounding this kind of an opportunity. The, you know, Ferris wheel, if you build it, they will come, has really seemed to work. I don't know if everybody noticed, but the lights are still on every night on the Ferris wheel, and it's such a spectacular attraction as people are driving up I-40 frame alongside the Skydance Bridge. It just is another wonderful piece of this project. It is ambitious, and I know that the developer knows that. This is a big project, and it's going to take a lot of time to realize, but I think this is a great first step, and I'm really excited to see it straddling Ward four and Ward six.
I'm conflicted by this. Certainly, there's, no one's more excited about new urbanism and this kind of project than myself. I've flown all over the country for years, attending Congress for New Urbanism and all kinds of national meetings, dreaming of something like this for Oklahoma City. And I hold Blair in particular in the highest regard in terms of his education and his mind, which I think is frankly brilliant and the first person I turn to, like for the western streetscape and many things. And so there's really nobody I would want more kind of leading this. And I am grateful for what's unique about the public charette and the public engagement and getting so many people. That's very unique for a TIF. I mean, oftentimes frankly, it's prepackaged, given to us, and then we vote up or down. This, the developers came to the council, which I think is unique. They came to the public, they did charrettes for a long extended period of time. All that's unique, and I think that's to be commended. On the other hand, a hundred and eighty million dollars, a hundred and eighty million dollars plus land swap, right? I mean, some of the frontage on the river is owned by the city of Oklahoma City, and will be added to that. I mean, I don't think you can really do it without that land swap. It's a hundred and eighty million dollars, plus the city gives some of the most valuable river frontage land to the project, and it's just massive. Am I wrong about that?
We don't give it to them.
I mean, swap it.
We swap it, but there's appraisals on the property we're getting and appraisals of the property that we're giving to them.
But you need, you, right. You're giving river frontage property, which I think makes it happen. I'll give you, there's maybe no additional dollar, but it makes it happen. I don't think there's any affordable housing to this, right?
We've committed as part of our plan that twenty percent of the housing units in the project will be affordable. That'll come through different tools in the affordability toolbox. One of the things we hope to do on the for-sell side is not just create initial affordability, but create sustained affordability through a community land trust. And so we're working on that right now, what that would look like. What community land trusts basically do is provide a limited equity ownership structure that allows people who wouldn't otherwise be able to afford to buy into the neighborhood. But then it takes away the incentive to sell out and leave as soon as the affordability clause is lifted. And so you have sustained affordability in the neighborhood. As we look at that, you know, our hope would be that we could serve people in the seventy percent AMI all the way up to one-twenty. When you go below that, you really need to start to package other federal programs in order to address the affordability issues there. And I would just, I would echo Mr. Couch's comments on the land swap. We really see this as, it's something that is allowing us to move forward on our plan, but we certainly, we certainly didn't come out ahead in terms of the valuations. We're giving up, I think, thirty-six acres to get fourteen to that point. One other thing I'll just mention, because I think it speaks to how we're trying to address affordability issues, part of it is through the policy and the funding and things like the community land trust. Part of it's through our size differentiation. And so one of the things you might see is that we have tiny houses, which are houses that'll actually be under eight hundred, even under seven hundred square feet. And while these certainly wouldn't work for a family on limited means, they're a great opportunity for a single school teacher or a young couple that wants to do something different than be in a downtown apartment. And so those are the different ways that we're trying to be innovative in addressing these issues. You know, we've attempted to respond to every opportunity to make it better, and so if you have ideas, we continue to be attentive. So certainly happy to talk.
What would be, I mean, what's considered affordable? When you say affordable, twenty percent's affordable, what are we?
We're doing it based off the typical HUD formulas, which they take area median income, in this case, the metropolitan area, I believe, is in the about a forty-eight thousand dollar range, household income per year. And then they look at a standard household budget factor of about thirty percent, and then they'd base that and say, what percentage of that area median income do you have to be making in order to afford a house there? And so seventy percent AMI, for instance, would assume somebody in the around thirty-five thousand dollars a year as a household income can afford on a typical parata budget to afford a house there. So it's very affordable in that case.
To be able to live there, you'd need to make generally about thirty-five thousand or more.
That's kind of the entry level, yeah, absolutely. Now, there's other programs that are out there. You know, I'll say that we are committed to this, and we've spent quite a bit of time digging into it. What you realize is that there's not that many precedents where market-rate developers have attempted to create this broad spectrum of offering. Most of the programs are specifically targeted towards developers that specialize in affordable product. The issue we see with that is what you tend to have then is you have, on the other end of the spectrum from gated communities, you have a project that is all affordable. Really, we feel like mixed-income neighborhoods are one of the best things for a healthy community, a healthy balanced community, where it really does break down some of the inequity of geography. It begins to allow social institutions and networks and access to be more evenly distributed. And so that's why we're looking at a mixed income. There's some examples out there, Mueller Neighborhood or Miller Neighborhood in Austin, which was something that was actually spearheaded by the city of Austin, has done a great job. And then I think community land trust, as mentioned, has really been the most effective model in ensuring long-term affordability.
In terms of the school, what percent of the slots for students would you think would come from the Wheeler District versus the surrounding area?
Yeah, the current projection assumes that the dual immersion school, it's basically that the school itself would serve about four hundred and fifty students. About fifty percent of those are expected or projected to be from within Wheeler District. About forty-five will actually be from the neighborhood directly west of us, within walking distance. And then we'd assume some of the slots continue to be filled by students from outside of that area. As a dual immersion school, it has a hard minimum that no less than forty-five percent of the students could be from Spanish-dominated families. It's a little bit of a leap to say that that ensures some type of socioeconomic equity across, but if you look at the typical pattern of income in the neighborhoods that surround us, especially in the Hispanic homes, it'd be fair to assume that it's actually serving a very etne population. Those schools, we see elementary schools with an, you know, eighty-five to ninety-five percent Spanish-speaking population that they're serving, and you'll see them at a hundred percent free and reduced lunch. So it's a challenged area. What we found as we've gotten to know our neighbors, though, is that it's people that have, that work hard, have family values, they're on their way up, their houses are getting nicer, they're taking care of their property, and so we're excited to be neighbors with them. I mean, we don't view this as, we don't view this as something where we're going to go show them how it's done, or we can't wait to figure out how to protect ourselves from our neighbors. There's some great neighbors down there. Now, there's still some issues, and there's been issues down there for fifty years, as far as I can tell, but we see that those issues continue to get better. There's been some key investments by the city with new street improvements, new infrastructure, of course, the river. And then we're seeing great things happen in Capitol Hill and on the southwest Twenty-Ninth Corridor. And so we view all of those as actually augmenting the cultural offering of what Wheeler's going to be able to provide. And we think that what Wheeler's going to do is hopefully bring more attention and more dollars to the area in a way that's mutually beneficial.
So is the, I thought before it was sixty or seventy percent of the students. Has that come down? Is there an agreement?
Sixty or seventy percent of the students are what?
From Wheeler District. Is the fifty percent like written in stone, or can it move?
Well, the forty, the dual immersion memory and understanding has a hard minimum of forty-five percent from either language group, Spanish, from Spanish-dominated families or English-dominated families. In that case, the max number of students that could come from, of English-speaking students that could come from anywhere is fifty-five percent. To the extent that Wheeler is able to attract first or second-generation immigrants from Spanish-dominated homes, then I guess we could begin to exceed that fifty-five percent threshold. You know, most skeptics would say that new market-rate urban mixed-use development is unlikely to be able to serve that, but with our affordability program, certainly a possibility. We've kind of broken down the geography in a way where the school district, the school itself, has a neighborhood boundary that's not specific to Wheeler or specific to the neighborhood. It extends from Blackwelder all the way to Walker. And so we really haven't differentiated as to whether a student from that neighborhood or from Wheeler has priority. They're all in the neighborhood boundary together, and they're really all part of the school and have an as-of-right opportunity to attend.
Okay. Go ahead. That was one of the issues that I was most impressed with, is they negotiate this boundary so that it extends outside the development, especially to the east. It extends several blocks to the east, I mean, excuse me, to the west.
To the west, yeah. It includes twenty blocks of the existing neighborhood.
So it's a, it's a, it's a real effort to not be just an elite school for that development. They've moved outside that, and once, I think they'll find a lot of families in that neighborhood that'll want to send their children to this kind of a school. And the school board, I think, was pleased with that, too, to see that they moved.
Yeah.
I like the boundary idea. I'm not a big, we've had this discussion a lot of times, I'm not a big charter school, enterprise school, all that. I feel like there's, that does damage to public education unless you can craft it in such a way that you include the public in it, and I think they've done that.
Yeah.
By moving outside the boundaries of the Wheeler District, they've moved it outside into the neighborhood, especially to the west.
Yeah. What we wanted from day one is a public school that served the neighborhood and didn't differentiate between Wheeler. I mean, you can, you can create some short-term gains by trying to isolate yourself and carve things off just for you and your residents, but in the long run, what's good for the neighborhood west of us is going to be great for Wheeler. And we realized that rather than building walls, we needed to build connections. And so I think you see that in our master plan, I think you see it in the school plan, and it's certainly something that we're really committed to.
It was a pretty robust conversation at the TIF Review Committee about the school, and the school board members were very positive and very supportive, and I think there was, you know, there will be ongoing discussion about how it all comes together, but it was very.
Trying to do two processes in parallel, so it's, we can't, we can't commit to doing the school until there's a funding base for it.
You kind of skipped over a word, though, when you talked about connections. When you look at the west boundary of it, the streets will all go through. They're not, right now, they don't.
Yeah, we'll have.
They dead-end at the airport. But right, all those streets that are to the west are going to be continued into the district. So it is going to be an ambitious attempt, it seems to me, to integrate itself within a neighborhood that is much, much lower socio-economically than the neighborhood that he's building.
I think one thing that stood out to me was, and you touched upon it earlier, is that a lot of time and attention was given to workforce housing, and that's affordable housing to a certain extent, in that it gives alternative housing for our nurses, our teachers, our police and fire. And if you could expound on that just a little bit, I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, so if you look at the overall breakdown, we want to produce over two thousand housing units. housing units on the south bank of the Oklahoma River. It's, it's a full segmentation in terms of what's off, offered. You'll have everything from single-family homes to duplexes and triplexes and apartments, even garage apartments. And by creating this variety of housing, you're really able to hit somebody at every stage of life, whether they're a college student or single and, and working their first job, or if they're young and married or boomers. We really want to be able to serve that broader audience. And so part of that is through size and type, and then part of it is through price point. When you look at the mix of what we're planning to have, we'd assume about one-third of that housing is of some type of single-family or owner-occupied iteration. And then we'll also have a, a healthy dose of, of apartments and multifamily. Those, that starts to solve a lot of the problem. There still is an expectation that if a district like this is successful, eventually, even on the rent side and not certainly on the for-sale side, you're going to see those prices continue to appreciate in a way. We've seen it in Oklahoma City over the last 10 years. Some of the neighborhoods that used to be a great bargain are, are now quickly getting out of reach for a lot of people. And so we think that the Community Land Trust is a thing that not only, not only supplements or supports our initial plan, but really ensures that you have that affordability in sustained fashion. You know, we, when we meet with the school district, said, we're here because we don't think you can have a great neighborhood without a great neighborhood school. And I feel the same way about having a full, full range or offering of affordability. It's, it's really hard to have a true neighborhood when only people who can write the check can afford to be there. If you have a neighborhood school, but the neighborhood teacher can't live anywhere close, that really is a shame. And so we, we can't solve, you know, when you meet with the school district, you realize that they're asked to solve so many of our society's problems within the hours that the school bell rings. And as a developer, I have to say that, you know, just, just by the way we build a house, we can't solve all society's problems. But we do think there's a responsibility to, to be a part of the solution. So these are the ways that we've looked to be a part of the solution. And we still have a lot to learn. We're, we're traveling. We're, we're talking to people, trying to figure out how we can be better at what we're doing. But it's something we're certainly, I think, up for the challenge, and we'll take it on.
Well, it's, it's very ambitious, but I want to thank you for the, the time and attention and detail you put into.
Thank you, Councilman.
Hey, Councilman Greenwell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ed, I, I think your concerns are warranted as far as the, the potential amount that will be raised out of the TIF and, and funds put in here. But I see this as, as certainly necessary. I see this development as transformational to that area of town. I don't think any other developer has the potential for success that Blair and his group has. I think the confidence that he has from people throughout the city will help make this development successful. I'm not sure anyone else could generate that level of confidence. And if this doesn't go through, the alternative would see this area just develop more into an industrial-type development. And that neighborhood that surrounds it, and it goes very far, it goes well past, well, it goes all the way at least through I-44 to the west. If you talk in terms of southwest 29th Street to I-40 west of Western, it goes, it's a rough area. I mean, it was rough when I was in school. And that didn't stop us. We still were attracted to that area just to have fun. But it is very challenged. And this type of development has the opportunity to transform that whole area. You'll see development after development come in after they demonstrate they can have, that they'll be successful. So I think it requires this level of, excuse me, funding to give it a chance. Because without it, boy, I, I just don't see anything else coming in. And going back to the education and the schools, I would raise a complaint towards the Oklahoma City Public School System for lack of schools in that general area. They've closed Capitol Hill Middle School. They've closed Jackson Middle School or converted it to a, an elementary school. Where is the closest junior high or middle school to that area? It has to be on the south side, Roosevelt on 44th and Independence. And then, I'm not sure, Pete, Webster way down south and, and Jefferson on 68th Street. So I think we can certainly say our education system or the school district has kind of abandoned that area. There certainly has been no new schools brought into that area. The last school, anyway. I think this is critical from a variety of ways of looking at it. And then once this development takes hold, I could see how that, the other areas will really start transforming and developing. And I think the reach is as far west as Stockyards, certainly the Capitol Hill area along 25th Street and then 29th Street. And as far east, again, going as far east as I-35. So tremendous potential. I certainly do support this. But I think they're taking on a tremendous amount of risk. I am very hopeful that they're successful. Thank you.
I really think it's also important to remember, kind of at its simplest form, that there is no reimbursement, not even a dollar, if they don't create the increment. So this project, you know, pays for itself. If the value isn't created, they don't get any money. So they are truly assuming all the risk. And only when the county assessor certifies the value and the first tax checks are paid, does any of the increment go back to the developer. So it's, you know, really a pure form of creating the value to help invest in the infrastructure that builds a neighborhood.
I've heard the word ambitious numerous times, and I, I think it's beyond ambitious. I, I'm not sure if there's any project that's happened in Oklahoma City over the last 10 or 15 years that's more ambitious than this one. But, so I, I really appreciate that. And I think it will transform that area beyond what we even think is, is going to do. The one question I have, though, is that why have we separated the 30 to 60 million dollars from the total budget? The 36, 30 to 60 million that we're going to reimburse for the financing costs? I mean, because that, that really is a, is a cost.
It is. We've historically laid it out that way, and we haven't had to carry any charges on, on all of them. So we, we, we want to be consistent with our methodology. We did not, not hide what those interest costs were, but we put it out that way.
And, and I guess in, in other TIFs, it's usually we're paying the finance cost, but we're, we're paying those, correct?
Yes.
Because, because we're usually borrowing money to put into the, and in this case, we're not borrowing.
We are trying to change our policies on that, as though historically we have done that.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
I guess I just have a policy question. This might be more just for Kathy or economic development-wise. I mean, I, I also believe it'll be transformational. I believe it'll work. I believe you have to have this kind of development on the ground for everyone to see, feel, and experience, and then hopefully it will replicate itself throughout the city. But it does, but, but I believe, because it's been successful so many other places, and you have so much empirical evidence that it does work, that it's going to work here. So I'm not, I'm not sure that you needed 180 million once it gets rolling. I guess the question is, excuse me, Kathy, can I just ask you, just as a, we're talking about 60 million dollars of infrastructure to get the ball rolling and get it going. Traditionally, the way the city does that is through its geo-bond program, right? And we build roads, we do drainage, we do, I mean, you could put basically everything that we're talking about here in a geo, or geo-bond. We've done streetscapes. Much of the stuff that, that we're talking about here was done on the Western streetscape and others. So I guess the question is, is that, I, here's the question is, when you have a geo-bond election coming up in nine months, and you don't, you haven't decided on the projects yet. I mean, it might be one thing if you had just passed a geo-bond, and you're not going to have another geo-bond for eight years. But when you have a geo-bond coming up in eight months, is it possible that the geo-bond program can get some of this kind of economic development going? I mean, here, here you've put, you've put all this 180 million dollars, and you've got, you've got Blair and his brother and his father. And I mean, what happens if something happens to them? What happens if something happens to Blair or the, the small number of people with the minds that we're talking about that can make this transformational? As opposed to, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm being kind of tangential and jumping around. But in 2007, we spent 77 million dollars widening roads in Ward Eight with, that violated our own vehicle per day count policy. So we were, we were doing that. We were doing a, a number that's larger than what we're talking about today on the geo-bond to encourage development in that area. In my, in my opinion, not nearly as healthy and as good a development, but 77 million dollars of infrastructure improvements. And to me, development follows infrastructure. You, city puts its infrastructure, that's what we're talking about here. That's what we're saying is going to make this happen, is you get the infrastructure built first, and then the development comes around it. So why, and why not have the city use its geo-bond program to do this kind of infrastructure and then let multiple developers, not just one developer, but multiple developers build around that infrastructure? I mean, maybe other people would like to build around it. And the, the city's investment can make that.
Can we, can I try to break this into some pieces first? Well, first of all, I think one argument that could be made is that in other parts of Oklahoma City that are not as economically challenged as this area, we would expect a developer to put in their own streets to the city's standard specifications as a part of the subdivision regulations that the councils approved, or the planning commissions approved in the, in.
That'd be a huge change in, in, in policy for what we've, what we've done historically.
So, so there's, there's that piece that typically, we would expect a developer to fund these, these costs himself. That's what Blair is proposing to do. We are giving him, I would say, an, an advantage and recognition of the economic situation or the, the blighted nature of this area by allowing the TIF revenues to help fund that infrastructure improvements. I think the other thing that is a part of this is that Blair has proposed to build streets that do not meet the city's subdivision regs, so they will be private streets. So we could not spend general obligation bond funds to build the streets that Blair has proposed. They would have to be public streets and built to the city's standard specifications. So I think that's a little bit of a challenge. I do think that in other parts of Oklahoma City, typically of like downtown and maybe the Health Center, we have used TIF to fund street improvements, infrastructure improvements. Project 180 is probably the biggest example of that. In recognition that these areas are blighted and more economically challenged and that, that the TIF revenues help to make those kinds of changes happen. And I think that's really what we're talking about with this TIF district.
So, so if we see this and we like it, we want to.
I was wondering the same thing you were, you know, about the geo-bonds. And, and I know it is a policy change for something like that. But the other thing that, that the more I looked into it, it's, it's a timing issue. And developers can't wait around forever for these developments to occur. And what you're hoping is that you have a faster pace of development, which will encourage other developers to become in and involved around the area. And so I think it's not only a policy issue, but it's also a timing issue.
Okay. But we're, we're now also, I mean, put aside this Wheeler district. I mean, for other parts of the city, if, if this works and you want to replicate it, you'd have to change, to use geo-bonds for similar kind of street improvements, you'd have to change the.
The whole nature of the development. I'm sure that's what Blair would say.
Well, you'd have to change the whole policy. I mean, that is a, that is, that is a, that is a 180 from how we do it now. Now, this is kind of a step in a way in that direction by letting this TIF work that way. But to, for us to be, put in a position where we put the infrastructure in, we go into an area and put the, I mean, I just think that's got, boy, you talk about a slippery slope. I mean, that.
But I think that's exactly what we're doing. No doubt, I mean, that's exactly what we're doing when we're widening streets with vehicle per day counts of 2,500 per day. That is exactly what we're doing. Now, you can argue that those kind of are allowed, and Blair's kind of streets aren't allowed. But we are absolutely pushing development.
I think, I think the difference, you know, once a, once a subdivision is built, and it's built to the city's standard specifications, and they become public streets, at some point in the future, the city could decide to maintain those streets or resurface those streets with general obligation bonds.
Well, what, what would have to happen if we wanted to use geo-bond funds to try and do the kind of streets that, that Wheeler district is?
You would open it up to every developer in town.
I agree with you that the extension, the expansion of those roads in far north were, were probably a mistake. I agree, I agree with that. But that's still the policy that let us do that is much, it's dramatically different than what you're proposing. I mean, it is dramatically different.
Well, one thing that's not being considered is, Ed, your point's well-taken with respect to putting in infrastructure out on the surrounding si, areas of the city. But this had its original infrastructure created back in the 20s. We're now approaching 100 years, and this may sound critical, but there hasn't been a whole lot of attention given to this whole area since that infrastructure was first put into place, again, almost 100 years ago. It's not like we're trying to expand the city into new areas. We're trying to reclaim this area that's been forgotten for the last easily 50 years. I mean, go down there, drive around in those neighborhoods.
I've been there.
Okay. Well, it's quite a bit different than the example of going out into Ward Eight and see new frontiers being created. And again, I'm not trying to be critical. I'm just saying, this area has been overlooked for such a long extended period of time. Some attention really does need to be given to it.
It's, I'd, I'd like to study this. I mean, I just like, as we're trying to decide on geo-bond projects, that maybe some of that is outside the box and non-traditional, and, and what we can maybe include and, and learn from this. But I, I want to ask you one final question. Because this, the notion of, of free money from TIFs, that it just comes out of area, I mean, it's very, it's frustrating. And I just want to ask, because I don't think, I don't think I true, I don't understand this completely. What, what impact? Let, let's say that this is successful. Everything happens as, as envisioned. It's all built in 10 to 15 years. Once you're at the 20-year mark, and you've got all this property tax going back, what is the potential impact, not on I-89, but with the state's funding formula for public schools, what is the potential impact on schools throughout the state? Rural schools?
I haven't made that calculation. I have no idea. And, and really, without making a lot of assumptions about when the development happens, you know, the, the phasing of it, and it would be, it would be a guess at best. But it, you know, it will create value. It will create property tax revenues that will be, assuming that at that point in time, we have the same state school funding formula that, that we do now, they'll be calculated through the funding formula and about, you know, some percentage of those taxes will be distributed across the state.
But don't think for a minute, though, that rural.
But that's a completely different problem than tax.
They're beneficiaries already. I mean, it's another, it's, that's another subject. But rural schools are the beneficiaries of the huge amount of, of revenue that's generated in Oklahoma City. I think I-89 gets like 60% return or some, some, she knows what, how much?
For every new dollar that we put.
I mean, but, but it's a big, it's a big percentage missing of the, of the, of the ad valorem taxes generated in I-89 that's returned to I-89 through that formula. Ripley's taken a skim off the top, and so is Dibble and all those other little small schools.
And I'm Leslie Bachelor, the attorney for the developer. And the way the state school aid formula currently applies to I-89, because we are such a dependent district, the offset for every new dollar that I-89 gets because of what we generate here in economic. what we generate here in economic development efforts, the offset from the state is 85 cents. So we only get about 15 cents of that, which means that the beneficiaries really of a project like this are the rural districts all around the state who aren't, you know, who, who get more, or any district, Tulsa for that matter, any district that relies on state school aid, there's more in that pot because Oklahoma City will get less.
Exactly. So conversely, and I don't, I mean, I don't disagree that the legislature has tilted the playing field towards rural versus urban, but if they're the beneficiary of, of this kind of development, they would, they would be, they would be detracted from, or their number would be detracted from if you take that $180 million out of the formula.
But it all starts with the essential question that I think in some cases is highly debatable, but here there seems to be agreement, that if you are targeting the TIF for an area that otherwise wouldn't develop without it, you are genuinely adding value to the tax base of all the potential ad valorem districts, all the ad valorem beneficiaries from projects like this that have to have something to prime the pump or they just never happen. So it starts with that essential question of eligibility and is the support necessary for the project? On this one, I'd point out a couple of things. First of all, the TIF is not paying all the infrastructure. Our calculation is it'll be roughly 50%. And I mean, there's, as council members have recognized, there's still a very serious question as to whether we can make this project work financially. In addition, you know, half the budget is going to school efforts. Now, that doesn't go through the state school aid formula because those are TIF revenues. They're not ad valorem revenues or chargeables under the state's school aid formula. So I-89 will educate more kids and not get a penalty effectively from the state because of the way we're funding this. In addition, the developer has committed to help make the elementary school happen much sooner than it would be paid for by the TIF alone. We, we will need to work out that financing, you know, if we make it through the TIF process. But we'll have, you know, 450 spots in an area, as Councilman Greenwell pointed out, that desperately needed much sooner than I-89 can do that on its own.
Well, we'll, I mean, it's not a zero-sum game. You have 2,000 people that are going to move into this, so that's 2,000 families that would have lived somewhere else in Oklahoma City that is either going to create new development or increase property values. So it's not necessarily a zero-sum game.
Right. And I think it's fair to point out that many of those families with children might purposely choose to live, you know, in Oklahoma City boundaries, but not necessarily I-89 boundaries. So by creating new investment to the tax base of I-89, we will be helping grow the district long run, not just within the TIF, but as has been pointed out, the other development that would be attracted to this general area in the city in I-89.
So can you, can you, I mean, one thing that we, we haven't ever seen yet, because we haven't really, is one of these TIFs actually expire and this increased property tax that wouldn't have happened otherwise actually go into, I mean, we, we did the downtown TIF and now we're kind of extending it. This is, this is 25 years, except the B part starts later, so it's going to be more than 25 years. That, that's something we haven't seen yet, is, is one actually expire and not us find a way to extend it.
But the downtown one is an excellent one to bring up and Kathy or Brent may be able to address this better than I can, but in those discussions, the reason the school district and the others agreed to amend and in fact wanted to amend is that they looked at the growth in their revenues. They took into account the offsets from the state school aid and it was demonstrated that they were better off by amending the TIF than by having it end because as soon as it ends, sure, they get that new dollar, but actually they only get 15 cents of it because of the way the formula works. So the way we're splitting the downtown TIF with the school district and the other tax and jurisdictions and the way more investment is happening more quickly, they are financially better off as a result.
And I think I understand that, that it's good for I-89, but for public education outside of maybe the city of Oklahoma City, there is a consequence.
But part of the result of that, I mean, it, it ends up with a very complicated debate about where you think state school funding is, is most needed and, and what you think the responsibilities of Oklahoma City are to that. If you think that I-89 is one of the most poorly funded districts in the state, which would be my belief, then the things we can do here locally to help I-89 reduce the burden on the state and help one of the most struggling districts in the state. So just personally, I see that as a tremendous public policy success.
And also when we amend the TIF, it, the, the line changes, right? Like the, it, it doesn't stay down at the, where the, it goes up to where the increment is, where the full, I can't, I don't know how to say it.
If you, if you change the geography.
I think we need to point out that TIF 2 will expire on the date it was always going to expire on in 2027. We haven't changed the expiration date of the basic form of, you know, for the majority of TIF 2. What's TIF 2? We've carved out a couple of pieces, one for the First National Center, some for the south around the, the myriad gardens and the new convention center site to go into the quarter shore TIF. But that's a pretty minor amount of the geography that makes up TIF 2. The majority of TIF 2 has stayed as a part of TIF 2 and it will expire in 2027. The first TIF that we have that will expire is TIF, TIF 1 in 2022, but the majority of the property in that TIF is tax exempt. So the big, the big change we'll see is, is in 2027.
But what I'm saying is that the new sections, the line where you calculate what is increment and what is.
It gets reset. That's exactly right. Yes, the base gets reset. Yeah.
Madam clerk?
Do we have a motion? No, we don't. A next motion.
Second.
We do have one person who have signed up to speak, Brother Washington.
Hello, everyone. Thank you very much. My name is Michael C. Washington. I'm the executive director of Empower People, Inc., where our motto is change your world and your world will change around you. I live in a residential district where this acting vice mayor here is city councilman, poor of excuse for one, however. Now then, this fake TIF district thing that we're talking about, you people are selfish. You're giving it to your wealthy investors downtown and Mr. Councilman, I'm sorry to have you as a councilman because you have repeatedly refused to give monies to poor working people rather than your bosses downtown who happen to be in white skin. I'm not going to hold it back for you. And Ms. Kathy O'Connor, you had stated to me to come to you earlier, well, now ma'am, I have a big old pamphlet I'm ready to give you regarding, since I believe you want to help my nonprofit organization out, but you told me before previous times that this TIF money is only designed for schools and big business. Well, we're getting ready to see if this is true or not. And as a matter of fact, if it is, ladies and gentlemen, and you people in the press may also understand too, that I am going to file a civil rights lawsuit for flagrante reckless discrimination of funds and taxpayers' dollars that my hard-earned dollars give to this city for your own personal needs and gains. TIF 2, TIF 1, what is all that about? Is that designed to cover up hide monies so that there would be no connection or paper trail design to reflect on where our actual monies are going to? Well, I tell you today, we're going to get deeply involved into this issue, very, very deeply. So I myself have a lot of things I want to do on the northeast side and I will not nor will I accept being rejected nor neglected any longer. Mr. Pettis, you will act right responsibly or you will walk the chalk line, bottom line. Now, number one, I have a good idea for a good plan for the northeast side for some of the money that's being spent and I'd like to be heard, Ms. Kathy O'Connor, I will begin with you if not this coming Friday, however, no later than next week and I appreciate your indulgence in that matter. And as a minute, sir, as a councilman from our side, you and I are going to sit down, aren't we, to discuss what viable economic plan I might have for the northeast side of Oklahoma City. The time is to stop passing the buck, sir. The game is over. The game is swelled when it's played well. Well, today, sir, I am the fullback and I'm getting ready to score the winning touchdown. Now, again, this TIF money that we're talking about, we don't need any segregation or separation from it. What we need is this money to be spent right and we need to have an independent investigation to determine where this money is going.
Mr. Washington, your time is up.
Thank you, sir. I'll be finishing because I still have a citizen to be heard. I'll be back. Thank y'all very much.
I, I do appreciate, I know that you guys want to move forward. I do appreciate the discussion. It's $180 million. This is, there's only two public hearings. It's bigger than any MAPS project other than the convention center. It's very complicated, especially for me, and so I appreciate the discussion.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else sign up to speak? And this item moves on. Next is 9L1, public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here who would wish to speak on any of these items? We do have one gentleman. If you would come to the, to my, to the mic and give us your name and address, please.
Sure. I have some property that may be in this. I don't know. I have no structures on there to speak of, but understand I have a complaint filed against me. The city has a lot of people in code that need to write reports and so.
Can we get the, can we get the address, please?
220 Northwest 71st. I had repeated citations for flat tires on a, on a boat trailer on some industrial property. I don't know what the problem is there, except it's harder to steal with tires flat. The theft problem out there is pathetic. I'd be happy to listen to the city's discussion on it. They, I've had some complaints of structural problems. I own the property. I was a battalion engineer with the 12th Special Force Group. I know structure, I have no structural problems there. I just have an avalanche of paperwork from code enforcement. My name is John McAllister, if that's important, and I appreciate your time, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor. Let me see what the city comes up with, see what I see on this, this report, which I received very little information.
And you are here in regards to item number J 22, 20, let me see, 220 Northwest 71st Street. This item is in Ward 2. Charles, anything you want to add to, to this item?
I think our photos fairly represent that property correctly. I will say he has removed a lot of the, the vehicles that were being stored on the, on the property. But other than that, that's about all the improvement that's been made.
I mean, I think clearly there's some structural problems. I think we ought to leave it on there.
Are you, sir, are you planning on making improvements or?
Well, the storage building right there has been stabilized. It is vertical. Part of the aluminum siding has been replaced. They didn't steal it because they couldn't get all the wood off of it. Problem there is thieves are stealing the aluminum siding off of things and, you know, causing damage. It's hard to keep up with the thieves out there without putting an alarm system and shooting a few of them.
So what are you, well, what are you wanting the city to do?
Well, I, I already stabilized and fixed that little storage building. I don't know whose problem it is, what, what the code enforcement people need, the problem. You can see the siding ripped off, the office trailer there where they were stealing wiring out of it. They don't do a very good job of putting the siding back up. I'm sorry. And I didn't go out there and remove the snow.
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, I think we have to leave it on the list, but do you think you could work with, Charles could tell you the things you need to do to come into compliance?
If they come up with something reasonable and quit writing me citations every two weeks, it'd be, we'd try to work on that.
Well, I mean, the code is the code, but he can, he can help tell you what you need to do to, to get the tickets to stop.
Well, we need to keep some of these young people that have nothing to do but write issues. I find a very thin line between people telling me I've got to remove vehicles that belong to me or they're going to haul them off at my expense. That's, to me, it looks like legalized theft. Most organized theft I've seen is not from right now, the homeless bums over here at Reno and Martin Luther King, but code enforcement people telling me what they're going to do and they're going to do this and charge me $4,000 for them. They haven't told me what they're going to do or what they're going to steal. And so I have a fine line there.
Could I ask you a question? In this picture right here, what is the building that's the background of that? Does somebody, is that a house where somebody lives?
No, that's just a, a structure sewn up temporarily to try and keep water off some, some stored materials.
Sir, I guess the question I might ask you is, would you like to have this property next door to your house?
I've owned that property since 1980. There've been a number of people in and out of there. Nobody's complained to me. It's just there's some real estate value going up in the area, so all of a sudden code enforcement's in there.
Would you like that to be your neighbor?
Be fine with me.
All right, sir, we're going to have to leave this on the item. If you work with Charles, well, we're going to have to leave this item on. Anyone else signed up to, to speak in regards?
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else signed up to speak?
In addition of the shadow that it's on this.
I have a question about where 67 Southeast 160, what the zoning is there? On the last one, on K 6701 Southeast 160, what's, you know what the zoning is there?
It should be, it's residential.
It's residential?
Is there a motion?
Yes.
All right. And the item passes. 9M, and this is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures in the historic preservation landmark district, 624 Northwest 24th Street. Anyone here signed up to speak in regards to this item?
Charles?
She haven't gave me my paper. I signed up.
Mr. Washington, this is in regards to 624 Northwest 22nd Street.
I'd like to speak on it. I signed up for all of this and I don't know what she didn't give to me. You don't have to belong to me, sir. I don't have a right to speak, sir. Do it. I don't have a right to speak. Oh, somebody's talking, I feel y'all are off the tape. I haven't got that right.
Excuse me, the councilwoman from this area would like to speak. Thank you, Brother Washington.
Charles, can you talk to me a little bit about this? Do you know what the situation is? I mean, our historic preservation officer has submitted a memo that suggests that this building is, retains its integrity and demolition of it would have a negative impact on the neighborhood. We try hard not to do this in our historic neighborhoods. What, have you worked with the property owner? I'm sorry they're not here today, but what's the current situation?
They haven't contacted myself at all. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to fall down on its own here eventually. I mean, it's, the roof's gone, which has destabilized the walls, as you can see.
Do you have the name and address of the, have you got contact information for Mr. Clark? I've just got a P.O. box here.
No, I have not.
Could we try to track something down?
Have we what?
Could we try to find some contact information?
All we have is that. I mean, all we have is what the records show and the post office boxes, all we've come up with. And we've had no contact from them back.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll work on it.
Now, Mr. Washington, you can speak on this item only, this item.
That's Ward 6. Yes, thank you very much. First of all, once again, it is my complaint, ladies and gentlemen of the jury, which obviously you're going to vote on to take like you've done before. It is wrong, it is flagrantly violative of the individual's 14th Amendment right to due process, equal protection. It is a violation of the United States Constitution, Article 1 and 1. The Supreme Court is the law of the land. You cannot wrongfully take without giving a person individual important information, knowledge beforehand that you plan to take from that person what they rightfully themselves spent their hard-earned dollars to manifest. Not only that, I want to know what, if y'all, if y'all haven't answered any questions around here, I'd like to know when have y'all tried to contact these people other than by some mail, other than by, how do they know to come down here to your city council meetings and to know that their property might be destroyed? I would like anybody in those districts to please contact. I would like anybody in those districts to please contact me, Michael Washington, free of charge. I would personally help you file a civil rights lawsuit against the city council here in the state of Oklahoma. You have no right to take these people's property and I myself would be going to investigate it because I have a list and we've been in turn asking for a civil rights injunction against you.
Mr. Washington, your three minutes is up.
I need to get my, I got to watch, I'm going to start counting on you for me on that, man. Because y'all still trying to quiet me up, but you can't, citizens to be heard is still open.
Is there a motion? And the item passes. Next item is 9N1, Public Hearing Regarding Unsecured Structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of these items? Okay, Mr. Washington, we're going to ask that you hold your comments until citizens to be heard.
All comments have to be relevant to the specific item. If you want to discuss the condition of this property... Right, that, that's it, but you can only discuss the condition of the property.
Can I get a motion?
Second.
And the motion passes. Next item is 9O, Public Hearing Regarding Abandoned Buildings. There, excuse me, Mr. Washington, there is a citizen who is here in regards to this. Excuse me, sir, if you would, please come up and give your...
Do you have a specific one?
Depends on whether or not a council member calls the question. If they call, call the question, that cuts off, cuts off all debate.
Excuse me, sir, can you give your name and address and what item you are here to speak on?
G.
Item G.
215 Southwest 22nd.
All right.
I own the property, it is a, used to be a garage apartment. I've got somebody coming out to see if they can straighten it up. It, it is not a garage, it's just storage. If you can't straighten it up and everything, it will be torn down.
We struck that one. It, it's not on the agenda any longer.
Because of the actions you've taken at the beginning of the meeting, we struck this off the agenda.
This is item O.
Oh, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
O.
Yeah, it's O1G.
You're right.
22nd.
215 Southwest 22nd.
G. 215 Southwest 22nd.
Okay.
Under abandoned buildings. Yes, it's on that also.
If I'm, if I heard him correctly, you're going to, you're going to remove it?
Yes.
Okay, we can work with him.
Okay, please work with Charles on this. Can I get a motion? Call the question. Thank you. Now, the next item is 9P. Is anyone here wishing to speak in regards to the removal of properties from the abandoned buildings list? Move approval. And this motion passes. Next is 9Q. And I understand we do not need an executive session. Can I get a motion? And this motion passes. 9R, I understand we do not need an executive session. Can I get a motion? And this item passes. 9S, I understand we do not need an executive session.
Correct.
And this motion passes. 9T, I understand we do not need an executive motion.
Right.
And this motion passes. 9Q, I understand we do not need an executive session.
Correct.
Can I get a motion? And this motion passes. 9V, I understand we do need an executive session.
Yes. Move it to executive session.
And this motion passes. 9W, I understand we do need an executive session.
Yes.
And this motion passes. Item 10, Claims For Denial. Is anyone here wishing to speak on the claims for denial? And this motion passes. Next item is Claims For Approval. Is there a motion? And this motion passes. Next is Items From Council.
I have three things. One, I was reminded by the gentleman that was getting tickets every two weeks that I've got another situation blowing up on Western where somebody put a big shed. Neighborhood can't stand it, promised me he would move it, didn't. Promised city staff he would move it, months and months and months go by. We start writing tickets, finally he files for a SPOD application and then just delayed, delayed, delayed. So how, how long have we had the policy where if you file for a SPOD that we stop writing tickets and puts everything on hold? Is it, basically, he came to a meeting of the neighborhood and just basically said, "All I want is the shed on here." Remember, his son came and told the neighborhood that. So it's very obvious in this case that the SPOD application process is being used to circumvent the city's code enforcement. Is that, is that just a, I mean, is that?
It can probably be abused. It's rarely that it is, it's generally a good tool for people. But yes, with any laxation or, or any grace that's given, it can be abused and you may have on it.
I've got like a series of them.
It generally works pretty well.
The problem is I've got like a series on the same street, so everybody's kind of getting more and more frustrated. And I, I don't know if that's something we can look at or...
Sure.
Okay. Second thing is that we have our, our first, I think it's the first GEO bond kind of public meeting. It's in Ward 2, but I think anybody can come to it. It's at Bishop McGinnis. It's from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. this Thursday night. You can come anytime between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. It's in the main common building. If you need help finding that, you can call Boyd at 297-2402. That's 297-2402, but please come. It's a, it's a huge part, part of what happens to the city really for the next quarter century. And so I hope everybody in Ward 2 can come to Bishop McGinnis on Thursday night, anytime between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. Third thing is I hope as many people as possible can participate. There's going to be a, a Women's March at the Capitol this Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m. It isn't really, I mean, if you wanted to argue, and many people do, that Oklahoma ranks at the bottom for women's issues in terms of health, well-being, really, you can, there are really frightening statistics. You can pick any one you want. But we rank at the bottom, and so I hope as many people come to that march to let our legislature know, we've got to start improving those statistics. I'm going to take my daughters this Saturday to Washington, D.C., not for the inauguration, but joining hundreds and hundreds of people from Oklahoma, from virtually every large city in Oklahoma, has buses, vans, caravans going to the protests on Saturday. And I hope that we have many more people at the protests on Saturday than for the inauguration on Friday. Because I want my daughters to know that hundreds of thousands of people that will be there on Saturday reject the behavior towards women, the attitude towards women and the policies regarding women, that they're all reprehensible and that that, we don't have to accept that as normal. And so many, many people are going from Oklahoma. If anyone is going, if anyone wants to help, there's a meeting tomorrow night at the Blue Room at 28th and McKinley at 7:00 p.m. Everybody who's going to Washington, D.C. for the protest on Saturday can meet there and learn about backpacks and the rules and where to meet and how to use the subway and stuff. Or you can just help and make signs if you're not going to go. If you're not going to go, I hope that everybody comes to the, to the Women's March, which is happening in cities across America and will be happening in Oklahoma City at the State Capitol this 10:00 a.m., at 10:00 a.m. this Saturday morning. Thanks.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to encourage the neighbors in Windsor Forest and also Meridian Hills to attend your neighborhood meeting that's coming up in the next two weeks. And then also like to remind, as Ed has already reminded you about the meeting at McGinnis, there will be a meeting at Windsor Hills Elementary School on February the 2nd from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And the purpose of this is to educate each one of us on the general obligation bond package and some of the uses that the bond money might be used for and then to make your preferences known to the people in attendance from city staff as to which projects you think general obligation bonds should receive funding for in the September election. Thank you, Your Honor.
I'd just like to remind everyone that there's a meeting tonight at Grant High School. The Oklahoma City Police Department is conducting a community outreach meeting at Grant High School tonight at 6:00. And although that's outside of Ward 4, I'd encourage everybody that is in that area to come because that's a, that's very positive. Then tomorrow morning at 8:00, we're going to have, despite the fact we have an open air of breads in Ward 4, we've found, found a location that would host us. So we, we're going to have a coffee with the cop at 44th and Shields at the McDonald's, probably fitting for Ward 4. But it starts at 8:00 in the morning, lasts till 10:00. It's a kind of a come and go event, but those events have worked very well to introduce people to the, to law enforcement and, and the community. You know, as many people as can turn out should because it's a really golden opportunity to be face-to-face with a police officer. That's it.
A couple of quick things. We have a beautiful photographic exhibit downstairs called the Women of Northeast Oklahoma City Photo Voice Project. It was on display a couple of months ago at the Individual Artists of Oklahoma space and it is a, just a beautiful look and powerful look at what one sees around our community. And I'd encourage everybody here to stop and look at it. I think it's just here today, Jim, is that correct?
I don't know that.
Francis, do you know, is it on display?
Yes, it's here for two weeks.
Oh, it's here for two weeks, so please, everybody, take advantage of coming to see these wonderful photographs. I really want to congratulate the Martin Luther King Day Parade folks, probably on behalf of the Vice Mayor and myself. It ran incredibly well this year, the weather was beautiful, great crowds of folks. It was a really nice afternoon. I want to also follow on Pete and encourage everybody that can to come out to Grant High School tonight for a town meeting with our law enforcement officers. So I think that's it. Oh, the, for anybody downtown, working or living, the Ward 6 GEO bond meeting is at Leadership Square on January 25th between 11:00 and 2:00. So we have a really good mix of daytime events and evening events. And as Councilman Chade said, anybody can attend any one of those meetings. So if you're, if you happen to be downtown and you'd like to come by, please do and share your comments with us.
Thank you, Your Honor. When I was in high school, once in a while, I got a phone call to come and see the principal and I always take that very seriously when the principal calls. And so about a week ago, I got a call from Principal Carlson from John Marshall High School alerting me to an issue on the use of the trails out at Bluff Creek. And so last Thursday night, we had approximately 80 people come together, what I call the bikers and the runners, to discuss the use of the trails. And not, I guess it's fair to say, one of my favorite movies is Open Range, where you had the free grazers and the ranchers. I didn't know how these two groups were going to coexist. And all I can tell you is they got along wonderfully out of this group. They came up with approximately eight rules that they want to implement so that they can coexist and they can use the trails together. And it was just a great meeting. And, and I had no idea when I got there whether it was going to be people throwing tomatoes and getting upset and yelling and hollering. It was just, it was a really nice meeting, a really constructive meeting. And I want to thank everybody who participated. The Oklahoma Earthbike Fellowship, Ms. Malone, who's the president of that, did a great job. Keep OKC Parks Free and Open, Mike Sullivan from the Runners Group did a great job. But most importantly, I'd like to thank our staff that was there, Doug Cooper, Belinda Miller and Jennifer McClintock for making it such a great meeting. Thank you.
John, I have one more thing, I just wanted to. I also got called to the principal's office when I was a kid, but I didn't like it very much. So I just wanted to show this and just ask city staff. I'm starting to just kind of drill down on some of these numbers from 2007. My, I can't even read, my eyes are so... So one, one thing I was hoping, because I've got a lot of neighborhoods talking about drainage now and I'm hoping that Eric and staff on Thursday night can talk about. So if you look at drainage in 2007, we really, we didn't do anything in Ward 1, Ward 2, Ward 5, Ward 7. And really, in the other four wards, it wasn't, it wasn't huge investments. So that's 10 years have gone by. And I, I know that we've got several neighborhoods. So I, I would just ask that we maybe have a little, we, this is our third town hall meeting on the GEO bond in Ward 2 and we haven't really focused on drainage yet, so I'm hoping that we can do that on Thursday night. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Next items, excuse me, is the city managers' reports, which claims and payroll? All right. Next item is citizens to be heard. Mr. Washington, you have three minutes.
Starting now, 1, 2, 3, go. All right. I noticed that we didn't talk about the buildings, sir, again, in our council district, Ward 7. Now, right here I have 1905 Northeast 26th Street, 801 Northeast 30th Street, 941 Northeast 31st Street. Now, I don't know the exact nature or status of those particular buildings, but sir, you and I will sit down and let's talk about me possibly getting some of y'all's money to revitalize these broken-down structures here on the northeast side of Oklahoma City. Do you find that to be a problem, sir, to do that? Hello, can you talk to me? I'm sorry, I, da, da, da.
Excuse me, sir, I cannot address you in my...
Oh, well, yes, you, sir, can.
I can't wait, we are under citizens to be heard.
Mr. Gordon, will you tell this man he can address my concerns if I talk question to him?
This is citizens to be heard, you're the citizen, please speak.
Come on, man, be serious. I'm going to help y'all change y'all's policies around because they're very idiotic. Okay, not saying you or people are, I'm saying the policies. Now, again, I'd like to sit down with you, Mr. Pettis, Mr. Quiet Man, and we're going to sit down and talk about me possibly buying these structures up with the money that you're so glad to give this map three districts and all this flound, baloney down this way for rich and white wealthy. What you're going to do, sir, is sit down and talk to me regarding those buildings. I think that we need to revitalize, refurbish those buildings and I believe if I got what the owners thereof and I don't have the finance that I need to, to redevelop that properties and to also buy from them from probably little or nothing since it's going to be destroyed anyway. So hopefully you and I can sit down, Mr. City Councilman, at your own convenience. That is, again, if I'm not discriminating against, because I'll file a lawsuit on you. But anyhow, even after I have to speak to someone as a, as a substitute for you, we're going to talk about this thing, again, or else an additional lawsuit will be filed on you and anybody else who has a problem with the northeast side being given some of this TIF money as well as me buying these buildings up, which can help the children that I deal with, which are nonprofit organizations, I, we're geared toward, again. Establishing our communities with our children, keeping them off the streets, out of gangs, out of jailhouses, out of juvenile centers. What's the best way to target and to derail this high rate of incarceration here in Oklahoma than reaching these babies while they're small? This is why I have programs all the time. Again, my actions speak louder profoundly than my words do. This is why I have a program now that I deal with these kids today. I have money out of my own pocket, I take my last and even if they count me selling my tennis shoes, I'll hold a, a town hall meeting of my own as well as talent show for these... a, a town hall meeting of my own as well as talent show for these kids so they can come out and show me that they have a greatness within them, greater than he and you than he that's in the world. And I believe what's in these kids need to come out, but we can't do it with people like you and others who are trying to hold us back to make sure this prison industry stays filled. We already lead in incarceration of women. Y'all go back. We lead in incarceration of women here in the state.
Mr. Washington, your three minutes is up.
Thank you, sir, for this time, and ultimately, we shall see each other again. Have a great day, everybody.
The next citizen to be heard, Richard McCoy. And please state your name and address.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Richard McCoy, Northeast Oklahoma City, 2301 Northeast 17th Street. And what I want to talk about is a proposed project in the, in the Renaissance District of Northeast Oklahoma City. I'm with Power People, Inc., Mr. Washington, the CEO. What my particular concern is the health of the people in this district, or in this section of Oklahoma City. The health, we live in an area where we have Oklahoma University Medical, and we also have the VA there, but a large number of people in this district are underserved as far as their health is concerned. And my proposal is to open a healthcare center that will address the gap between the people who are able to take advantage of these two great institutions there and those who are not fully able to get the benefits. You know, we have a great, what do you call it, medical center that, that offers, you know, very leading-edge health as far as cancer and these kind of things that are very prominent in this area, as well as alcoholism, drug abuse, all kinds of different things that the state is, you know, very high as far as the country is concerned. This is, there's been a number of studies that showed that the health of these citizens are very much lacking. And I would like to address that by offering, I won't call it alternative, but I'll call it integrative healthcare facility. What this does is it, it doesn't preclude, you know, traditional medicine, but includes traditional medicine and alternatives, what you call like acupuncture, whatever it may be. There is health in new, new health alternatives that involves things that have been somewhat overlooked. And I like to bring this to the consciousness and awareness of people in the area, show them that they, they can use, they can do other things besides what are available, some things that could help them much more, I'll say, effectively in some cases than chemotherapy or other things like this. That's basically it, and I'd like to have an opportunity to, to do a formal presentation at some time in the future.
Can I say that I appreciate the way you're presenting your information, and it makes me want to listen to your ideas when you present it that way? And I, I really appreciate it. And I agree with you on alternative medicine, acupuncture's been around for 5,000 years, there has to be something to it. So thank you for.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. We have an executive session.